We have A D M, Mr. President.
You. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the April Day After the Eclipse Study Session for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call, please.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Public comments, this is a time set aside for persons in the audience speak on items not on the agenda but are within our purview. And we have one, Mr. Mosher, I think you asked, Steve.
Thank you, President Schaefer and members of the board. My name, as you know, is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding the closed session, I realize that's an agenda item. I did want to say that while the Operations Code warns ratepayers that there is a statute of limitations that may apply to refunds, as District Council Burns will probably inform you, there is also something called a discovery rule, which in many cases causes a statute of limitations not to start until the injured party discovers that they have been injured. And in connection with that, I wanted to make a non-agenda comment, which I think Ms. Mallard has made a very good point, that the Orange County tax bills are not at all clear on what people are being charged for or who is charging them. Mine simply has sanitary assessment and an amount. It does not say single-family sewer service, C M S D, or anything of clarity like that. It doesn't identify you as the agency, and it shows another sewer fee much larger, which is coming from the Orange County Sanitation District. The point I wanted to make is to limit the district's liability for future claims of this sort. It might be a good idea if it's not have already been done from time to time, every year or two in the district newsletter, to show an example of what a property tax bill looks like, show people where they will see the charges from them on them, and in that little sidebar, show what the rates should be, and warn people that there is a limitation on their ability to refund if they're being mischarged, and they should be looking at that and checking that they are being charged correctly. That would not get to all of the ratepayers because the delivery to the addresses does not necessarily go to the property taxpayer, but at least would go to some of them. So that's my non-agenda comment. And the other one I wanted to make, reviewing the video, I know that President Schaefer asked what the district's ability is to recover under charges that may inadvertently have been made over the years. And I wanted to point out, as far as I can tell, our operations code is silent on what your policy is with regard to that. So I'm not sure you have a policy directing the district staff as to how they should pursue recovery of under charges. And perhaps you need that policy. Thank you.
You. Seeing no one else for public comments, I have no other tickets. We are going to, at this point adjourned to closed session in conference with our legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D and paragraph four of subdivision E of section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine, we have one case to discuss. So once we're done with closed session, we'll be back with you. Thank you. Okay, we are back into open session, and the report from closed session is that the board has authorized the general manager to reopen negotiations with the claimant. And pending those negotiations, we will have a decision to make on how the negotiations turn out. So that is the report for item two on the agenda, which leads us to item three. We will not be mo- excuse me, we will not be reconsidering the item until the negotiations are complete. So those will transpire with the general manager and the claimant, and we will try to resolve this at the April Board Meeting. Okay? So that's items two and three on the agenda. And so we'll move to item four then, introduction of new C M S D employees.
Good morning, Mr. President and member of the board. Today, I'd like to introduce you to our newest member of the finance department, Amanda Long. She works part-time as accounting clerk and is currently studying economic at Golden West College. Please give her a warm welcome and say hello to her when you see her around. Thank you.
What was her name again?
Amanda.
She's, she's a wrestler? Gold West wrestler?
Oh, Golden West College.
Most of us went to Orange Coast, but that's okay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm going to introduce Jesus Flores can come up. So Jesus Flores is our newest facility maintenance worker. He just started last week. He comes with a ton of experience in the facility maintenance and custodial services. He previously worked for schools, most recently at U C I, and he also worked in hospitality, hospitality industry. And we could definitely notice that, because he's very, very polite, very customer service oriented. He's been, he's been fantastic addition to our team, and so, so I want to introduce you, Jesus Flores.
Welcome aboard, Jesus. So you're, you worked at U C Irvine? Good. We're glad to have you aboard. Jesus, where do you live?
I currently reside in Tustin.
Right, Tustin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Welcome aboard, bud.
New employee, Robert Morris, he is on vacation this week. He, when we offered him the position, he already had his vacation planned, and so, so, yeah, so. So we'll introduce him to you at your next study session.
Last name?
Morris, and he's our new engineering technician.
Thanks. All right, item five. I think that's David. You're up, bud.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. I'm here to present my report for the month of, month of March. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of March, I caught three scavengers within the city, three different locations, Ogiloe Street, another one on Ogiloe, and then one on Cabrillo, so pretty much all on the south side of town. Trash container enforcement, I had a total of one hundred and seventy-seven cases. Again, listed by streets and how many carts were on that street. Eldon seems to be one of my biggest fans. No cases of graffiti this month. And the last page is going to show you where I saw those scavengers within the city. I have my report here from February. Did you guys have any questions from last month? I was unable to make that, that study session.
Our, our friend on the alleyway up, off of, behind my office, the guy with the bike and the thing, I think you've talked to him before.
Trailer?
He's got a little trailer behind his bike, very active the last month.
Caught him in the city, very nice guy.
Yeah, I have to say, he's very, very respectful.
But I, you know, caught him and explained, you know, in detail of what the issue is, so. I'll, I'm sure I'll see him again. I mean, if I leave, he's gone to the next can. I have to stay right there until he rides away.
We had a tenant in the apartments, one of the apparently moved out and just left a mess in the, the little enclosure there, the very first one.
Right by your office, correct?
Yeah, and he was pretty active going through that stuff.
Again, I'm not sure what his situation is. He's obviously homeless, but he is very motivated, man. I'm telling you, I see him all over the place, so.
Loads up that little trailer, that's.
Yeah, I'll stay on top of it, sir.
Any other questions? Bob, go ahead.
David, do you, when you catch scavengers, I think we'd ask you to ask them the question about where they're taking their the recycles. Are, are you, were you able to do that, or have you done that?
This, this guy, he, he wouldn't tell me. Everyone else is kind of silent on the whole thing, and I'm not sure, really, like I said, there's nothing at Stater Brothers, O C C, I mean, unless they're, you know, leaving the city.
Have to be leaving the city, don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I don't know anywhere else.
Harry, do you happen to know by chance where they're going? Yeah, if you don't mind, bud.
There was, until recently, a location off of Fairview and MacArthur where a lot of guys were taking stuff. That has since closed, but I do know a lot of people have been taking them back to the stores, like Bevmo at Nineteenth and Harbor will take them back from. The stores are obligated to take it back if there's not a recycling center within a half a mile radius of a retailer. The stores have to take them back. They don't like to, but they have to.
You know, the, the one I've seen is at Walmart down on Beach in Calbert.
A lot of people are going to that. Theoretically, the closest one where they can cash them in is near the Edison Facility, near Edison High School. There's a recycling center over there.
Mike, the stores take them back, do they give them a some coupon for how much value they?
No, they give, they give them cash on the spot. They have to give them cash.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for David this morning? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item C six, our three cart curbside collection program.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of weeks ago, staff met with C N R representatives to talk about their, their plan to implement the three cart program. And so originally, we were concerned about logistics and notifying the public on, on how this program is going to roll out. And I have to admit, once we heard the presentation from Julie, I was so impressed. I said, okay, you got to come and share this with you, with the board. So that's why today, I'm pleased to introduce, you all know Julie Beretta. She's going to explain to you the, the plan, C N R's plan for the rollout for the three cart program. So turn over to Julie.
Good morning. Members of the board, so I'm here today rather than do the tongue twister that's on the agenda to give a recycling program update. So just an overview, and I would prefer, as maybe you would as well, rather than save your questions till the end, totally okay if you want to interject as we go through each slide, if there's any question or just any clarification on the plan. So we have cart deliveries, again, as Scott mentioned after meeting with staff, cart deliveries and exchanges will begin on November seventh. The whole process takes approximately twelve weeks. Exchanges will be paused, since we're starting in November. We will pause the exchanges for Christmas tree collection. It's the same staffing that does our cart exchanges, that also does Christmas tree collection. So we'll have to pause for two weeks, and then we'll pick up and do the remainder of the recycle cart deliveries and/or exchanges, which I'll talk a little bit more in a future slide. So when all is said and done, as part of the three cart rollout, every resident will have or will be delivered one recycle cart, and one of their mixed waste carts will be removed unless we're told otherwise that they want to keep one and pay an extra fee. And again, we'll talk about that in a little more detail. So again, all, at the end of the day, all residents will have one cart for landfill, one cart for recycling, and one cart for organics.
I think historically, we had said that they would retain two organic carts.
That's true. If they have them, they will keep them. The standard that would be unless.
Well, the standard, that'll be the standard set in the future.
Exactly. Yeah, the only thing we'll be removing is an extra, what we used to call a mixed waste cart. But if they have extra recycle or extra organics, those carts will remain.
But don't we have to finish this program by January first?
Yes, but I think if we spill over to January, the Cal recycle is not going to do anything. I mean, they've got other bigger issues to deal with, and if we roll over, yeah, I'm confident with that.
I think we talked about, I mean, I've always expressed my opinion that we should start like at the end of the summer, and I don't know why we're waiting till November to do this.
Yeah, they still have to get all the blue carts. They haven't been delivered yet. They have to, they have to order them and get them and get them shipped there. And that's why they, they're doing, they're going to be, you'll hear in from Julie, they're going to be doing a cart inventory of what's out there right now. And so they need to order some additional cars, and that takes time.
How long, how much time does it take to get the carts, Julie?
Eight weeks. Eight weeks, and then once we get them, then we have to assemble them. It's about a ten-week process.
Put the order in yet or not?
No, because we're not going to place the order until we do the cart survey, which I'll cover in an upcoming slide.
So you're going to, let's say, resident A doesn't have any of their carts out on this pickup day. What happens then? Do you still drop a recycle cart?
No, we don't. So this, and this happens, so we do a lot of transitions. Last summer, we exchanged thirty-three thousand carts for the city of Laguna Niguel. We had to exchange all the carts because they were not S B thirteen eighty-three compliant. They weren't the right colors. And so what we would do is what we refer to as standard barrel maintenance. So, and it happens, people will be on vacation, they just forgot. And so usually what will happen is the resident will call us, and they'll say, hey, I was on vacation, or my kids forgot to put the carts out. Can I get my recycle cart delivered? And we let them know, we automatically schedule the ticket for the next collection day. Because we do everything on collection day.
Actually, what they say is, how come my neighbor got a pretty new cart and I didn't get one, right?
Yeah, but it'll be on the next collection day if, if theirs was not delivered.
Even if they call or don't call, it's just the next time that their carts are out, this is going to happen.
Yes.
Now, there's nothing to prevent, they've got two mixed use, mixed ways, I mean, three. But one out, it's going to, they're still got two, and no one's going to, all right.
Yeah, and that's going to happen with every city. It could be that they only put out one that week, so we're not going to take an extra one, right? And then we'll see it pop up. But as part of our amended contract that we did last year, we do do, I can't remember, Scott, if it's every year, every two years, we do do a container audit. So we catch those things. It happens all the time. We'll get people that will call and say, oh, someone stole my organics cart. And then two years later, we do an audit, and suddenly they have two at the curb when before they said one was stolen. So that's why it's good to do the audits periodically, so we are able to make sure that we're billing appropriately for the carts people are using.
Great, thank you.
I have one question. When somebody has a question, will they be calling you and not us?
Yes, they will be calling us.
Okay, so we don't have that problem.
No, and we do extensive training with customer service. We'll do it prior to the rollout, so they're all understanding that the type of calls they're going to get, and they'll understand, this is a unique situation that we're doing where we're going to deliver a cart and take a mixed waste cart away. So that's something that I will cover with the training with our customer service reps, make sure they know. And then the last bullet point on here is that it's, it's very detailed how we deliver the carts in quadrants, and I think that's on the next slide. But as soon as you get your recycle cart, the following week is the first time you get your recycling picked up. So you use it immediately, and your recycle service starts the following week.
Um, I think I've forgotten my question, but it is upon the residents to make the call, or does C R N R know that they've delivered to two eight, four, six, and two eight?
We do. I have that on the next slide, and so I'll, I'll kind of go over that. No, Ellie just changed it.
Before you do the next slide, I, can we go back one? So the thing that, that kind of gets me is the delay for Christmas tree. I mean, get this program going, oops, we stop it for two weeks, and then we start it up again. And by, by the time we get to Christmas tree, most of the cans will be out, or barrels will be out, whatever, containers. I don't like that delay. So if, if, instead of November seventh, if we went October fifteenth, we could be done before Christmas trees, right? Theoretically, or?
I have to count the calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be close.
Let's say October first. We did this the week of October first. We wouldn't be subject to that, the Christmas tree collection delay, probably.
No, we wouldn't. We would be done before Christmas.
That's the one thing that kind of hangs with me is once you get the program rolling, we should roll it all the way till it finishes.
It could prompt, prompt some phone calls, because as people are driving through neighborhoods, or they're seeing, or they have friends, and they're talking about it, and they're noticing that other people got carts. It could prompt some phone calls saying, well, wait a minute, I haven't got my cart yet. When is, when, when do, when does my sale happen? Which I do have information to cover that in the next slide, but that could be a.
Uh, no, I'll save it. Good, go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, we will do a cart survey, and so the reason we're doing this is, is we've done a lot of outreach. There's been some social media, but we want to make sure that every resident knows that things are going to be completely different than they were before. They used to have two mixed waste carts, and they could have two recycle and two organics. What will change, as I mentioned, is the point of diverting and the whole S B thirteen eighty-three and climate action plan is to reduce the amount of waste going to the landfill. So with the delivery of the second, or for the recycle cart, one mixed waste cart will be taken away. But as President Schaefer mentioned, some people might have, or I think Mr. Echols mentioned, some people might have three mixed waste carts on the side of their house. They might want to keep those, and they're welcome to keep those, but there's a fee now for anything more than one. So let's say they have three, so we want to do this education, this cart survey, and tell them in writing that should you decide you want to keep your second landfill cart, and they'll check the box on the survey. So they're going to check the carts that they want, that they know that the extra landfill cart fee is nine dollars per month, per cart. So we want to just make sure it's really clear, because we don't want, what we don't want to happen is we have a ton of people calling saying, why did you take my second mixed waste cart? I want that cart. They have to pay for that now, right? So the survey also gives everyone an opportunity, similar to what you have in the lobby here, and as you see in the presentation, when we do the survey ahead of time, it gives them also the opportunity to increase or decrease all their cart sizes. And so I know that some people were grandfathered, once upon a time, they had nineties for mixed waste, and then it went to two sixties. Now they can go back to having a ninety, and they might say, well, okay, I think I can get away with not having two mixed waste carts that are sixties. I want the ninety-five gallon instead, and that might be sufficient for their family. So we also have issues where I know where Director Perry has shared, I know, Mike Carey has shared that for their area, they need thirty-fives. So this gives them the option of picking different sizes, and it's all listed on the cart survey. So what happens is if they don't return a survey to us, and there's two options, it's going to have a Q R code, so they can actually tear it off the card and put it in the good old mailbox, or they can scan the Q R code, and there's a flyer that they fill out, and it comes directly to us and Mike's team in sustainability, and they enter all the new service requests into our billing system. If they don't fill out the survey either way, whether it be mail or online, they will get a ninety-five gallon recycle cart, will take a mixed waste cart away, and they can change it later on if they want to, if they realize people are getting different sizes, or we do the town hall meetings later in the year, they still have time to make that change. But if they don't fill the survey, we're going to exchange for them what we have in our computer system like size that's in the computer system. Now, this could happen because we see this. If they don't return the survey, and we're going to remove, or this could be for anybody, once we deliver the recycle cart, we're going to remove a mixed waste cart. Some people have a ninety gallon mixed waste cart and a sixty gallon mixed waste cart. We will remove the smaller of the two. We're not going to take the big one. We'll take the small one. Okay, so that's very clear. So the other thing, I didn't go into detail, but I'll, I'll pause to elaborate here. It's, um, it's quite interesting to see, or I do have anything on the next slide, because I have a picture of the truck. Let's go and shift to the next slide.
Oh, Julie, I have a question on this slide. Right now, the landfill carts are green, and the recycling carts are going to be all blue. I would, I would prefer that you show that on the, on the, on your literature, rather than three black carts.
So some people have the black one. So as we exchange carts, and we've been exchanging to this new style for the last three, two, three years, some people have both, but it's a good point. It's good for us to show both colors, just so they realize what's going to happen. But again, I have more information on that next slide that I'll talk about, how we identify the carts and what we're going to do.
But when do we plan to start the town hall meetings?
That's in the presentation later.
Okay, sorry, sorry. When we do the town hall meetings, is it possible to have cards or whatever for people to fill out their preferences, and we can collect them?
Yes.
That'll, so we can do that?
Plan.
Okay. When you're going through the transition and delivering the blue, the, the blue carts, the folks in condos who don't have an organics cart, are you delivering the organics cart at the same time?
No, we're starting those now. So that's something that Mike is working on with staff. We're going to start doing those.
Those are going to condos now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are, are they carts, or are they, are they carts? Yeah, they're the smaller ones.
Okay, so on the cart transition. So, uh, very detailed, once we get all the survey carts back, we update our billing system, whether it's online or a card, we update our billing system, and we make the change in our system. And the reason we're able to do that is, at this time, because we don't do the billing, the billing's done by the district on the property taxes, we can change everything in the system as we get the request orders, because it, it won't impact billing. And the reason that's important is, and I have pictures to kind of give you an idea of, you see the semi truck on the bottom with all the carts. This is a very orchestrated rollout whereby we will produce, once we get all the survey carts back, we change everything in the system, we export a customer list with all their cart sizes into an Excel format, and we route them by day for fourteen weeks in order. So if staff was to get a phone call, or we were to get a phone call and said, hey, I live on one, two, three Main Street, do you know when I'm going to get my recycle cart? Staff or us can look through the schedule, look, sort by that address and say, okay, you're scheduled for November twelfth. We can tell them to the T, the date that they're going to get their cart. And when they, when they load the trucks, they do it exactly by the number of customers. So today, we run two routes, and each one can do four hundred carts per load. If it was all nineties, a little bit less, but it's quite a bit, but they are loaded in the vehicle synchronized in order of route delivery. So when they're pulling them off the truck, they're, they're, they're loaded in the order, they're going to offload them, and then roll them to the curb in front of each home. So what's unique to this is, in addition for communication, we'll do a lot of stuff via social media, but we'll also be doing an auto dial on the Friday before any, the Friday before the following week's deliveries and exchanges. The only downside to that is because we don't do the billing, our, for our phone numbers are only good as if someone has called us for a bulky pickup, a cart exchange, part of our internal process is that we ask them for a current phone number in case we ever need to report or do these types of outdials. So it's still really important that we're doing the town halls, we're doing social media posts, because we may not have phone numbers for every customer, if maybe they've never called us for anything. Or we could have a phone number on the system that's an old landline that no one's using anymore, right? So, but it does work, and like, so this is a process that we do with all of our transitions, whether it's a new city or most recently Laguna Niguel with a cart exchange, which, which I was involved with, and I have to say, even for myself, going through thirty-three thousand carts being exchanged, and that one took us on May to end of August. So it was, it was just a few weeks longer. But it's, it's quite impressive to see it. I was, it was, I was really surprised by the organization of it all.
You know, as much outreach, as much town hall, as much information as we pass out, do you have any idea how many calls you get? What the heck is this blue thing out in front of? I mean, there's a certain, and I hate to be pessimistic, but I think I know human nature after living so long, not as long as you. You are going to get a certain amount of calls from. What's this blue card, what, you know, why do, what's going on here?
So again, it's gonna happen. I would say, it wasn't that bad in Laguna Niguel surprisingly, but same thing, we did the town hall meetings. But we will have information on both of our websites, so. You know, nowadays, people do like to do everything on their iPads or their notebooks or their computers, so hopefully they'll go either to the. To the district's page, or to our website page for Costa Mesa, and find the information to get an understanding. But I will say that um, I, I follow the district on Facebook and the social media posts, and I do see people responding positively saying, oh, finally. We're getting a recycle cart, because I still think there's people out there that don't think that that stuff gets recycled in the mixed waste, they think it all goes to the landfill.
And we have that during the organics rollout, same thing, people calling with that, the same.
I, one last question, or one more question, uh, Julie. Um, I'd, I'd be interested in um, Mike, a version of Mike's question, and that is, how many? People have called CRNR, you can get. A substantial number of telephone numbers. If it's legal from the um, registrar voters' walking list. They almost universally have the citizen's telephone number. Um, sometimes you can get additional information, but telephone numbers are available. Um, uh, I don't know if it's worth the effort to um, for CRNR or staff to, to have that data.
We have monthly rollout meeting specific to this process, scheduled with staff, so in addition to our operations meeting, we have a cart rollout, but. And we put that on the agenda to talk at, we will be requesting that information on the cart survey as well. Hey, make sure we have your current. Information, provide an email or a phone number, so we're hoping to get some of that also from the people that do respond to the card.
Well, my question is, what, what percentage of the residents that we deliver to, do you presently have telephone numbers?
I'm not even sure I can extract that data, I might have to have a query bill to pull the system to see, and here's the thing. Like I mentioned, they could, we could have the phone number, it could be an old landline that they don't use anymore.
Mesa has every, everyone's telephone number, and they have in their emergency response process, they can contact. A substantial percentage of residents.
That's not a bad idea. We recently were awarded the city of Laguna Beach, and it was the same situation, they were billed by the city on property taxes. So to make sure we had all current data for the new residents in Laguna Beach we'll be servicing, we used the current haulers. Data, we used property tax data, and we used the water district's data, and we did an overlay. And trying to get as much information that we could populate and to put into our billing system.
Not sure, I think we've had this discussion with Mesa before, and I don't know the outcome of whether. Is the agency, they'll cooperate with us. Um, we have the same needs, we need to be able to contact. Certain number of residents in emergencies, and I don't know if we have. Complete data.
So the other important note, uh, that I, I wanna share is, as I mentioned, it's a semi truck that comes for streets that are narrow, and there's not room for the semi truck to come into. We have um, box fans, we use those to deliver our carts and pick up bulky items today, so we use the box fans as well, so it's not just the semis. Because we do have space constraints in every city that we serve that those big trucks cannot fit. So as I mentioned, when we do the exchange, it'll be based on what they ordered, so if they took the time to fill out the card. They're gonna get delivered to their house what they requested. As you can see, this truck is full, so when we show up, this truck is full of carts, recycle carts, and any different sizes that they wanted. But we have to offload everything out of that vehicle before we can put load back in what we're taking away. So again, that's a lot of education, because sometimes that will prompt phone calls. So once the deliveries are done, and we offload the truck, we come back a second time. And then remove all of the extra carts based on what, and there's just no other, there's just no other way to do it. We can't have two to three semi trucks parked on a street, because understand, we're still providing collection the same day as well. So we don't wanna bottleneck a residential street with a trash truck, a recycle truck, an organics truck, and then. Two semi trucks or a box fan, so that's the reason that we offload, and then we swing back around. And for the most part, like I said, I was intimately involved with Laguna Niguel, it didn't prompt any phone calls. What will happen is, and Brett mentioned a little bit earlier, is some people will come yank their carts back in, because they're not. To your point, they didn't see anything, they're not paying attention, they know their guy comes, it, they're at the ten o'clock service time, they'll just go out and bring all their carts in. And then we come by two hours later to the exchange, so again, those are the ones that will call and say, hey, I didn't get my recycle cart, or I didn't. I didn't get what I put in the system, no problem, Mr. Customer will put it in for the following week.
And you just like, the ones that are being set aside to be taken back, and you just get a sticker or something put on it saying. To be picked up, or something with like, don't put this away, you know what I mean?
Um, all the, all the outreach is talking that we're gonna do is talking about leaving your carts out till six PM that night. And we've talked to David about it too, just to make sure we don't want anyone getting a citation for having their carts out later, so even if they were serviced at ten. All of our outreach is saying, please leave your carts out until six PM if you're expecting an exchange. Yeah, those, those are the, the, the one offs that we just have to, we just have to kind of deal with.
You know, which of my neighbors are out there waiting for it to get in, they know when that truck comes religiously.
Yeah, so the other thing is, and this kind of um, follows up to um, Director Ooten's comment. So we know that some of the mixed waste carts today, if they're really older ones that have the Costa Mesa seal on them. They are green instead of a black body, but either way, whether it's a green cart or a black cart. The week after the recycle cart is delivered, we will have a crew that's gonna go through and label, and there's a picture of it. On top of the mixed waste cart that now becomes the landfill cart, a label will be put on top of every lid. Throughout the city, the week after, so that's a separate crew um, that we hire that goes through and put a label on every single cart that's out.
Wait a minute, where's my cardboard sticker that I asked?
That's separate.
Oh.
Break down boxes, that's a separate, that's a special sticker just for C of S D.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, we have not forgotten. Um, and so then, getting into the town halls, as mentioned, these are, these are set in stone, so we're doing two a week, one in the evening on a Wednesday. The Saturday is the nine AM, so we have them set for the seventh, the tenth, and then October second and October fifth. So we will be doing the presentation very similar to what you've seen here today. This is just a social media graphic that we've already put together, working with the district, um, kinda gives them an idea of what they've got and what it's, what it's going to. And then, um, as I mentioned, we'll have all the flyers and all the outreach material on the district's website as well as ours, just trying to. Capture them any way that we can.
Julie, I have one question. I would like to see it more spread out throughout the, the various, uh, throughout the city. To make it easier for residents in a particular district to get to. Um, I would, I would suggest, you know, the um, Methodist Church, or, or, or something in, in my district. There's got to be alternatives, um, so that people don't have to travel very far, or travel at night, or whatever.
Turn that one over to staff.
I would, I would encourage staff to find um, locations, at least four different locations. For these town halls.
We had surveyed um, the community to see where they would like to have these um, town hall meetings, and. These are the locations that were popular, and these dates and times as well.
You've surveyed the community?
We did, we sent out a social media survey and a poll, and we also surveyed the CAC. Who do represent those different districts as well, and these are the locations that were the most favorable.
Well, I didn't get to vote on that. I think we should, sort of like, Back Bay High School, cause that was a great location for us, and we did it, we need to cover the west, east side.
We did approach um, the school district to see if we could utilize some of their facilities, and we. Had challenges being able to book. We did approach Hillcrest as well, and they were charging us a fee, a substantial fee for us to be able to do that. Um. I think it was five hundred. Per hour, and we're looking at, mm-hmm, and we're looking at about, at least three hours.
We can use my, my patio for three hundred.
Yeah, I, I'll just follow up, I mean, there's no perfect spot, no perfect time, no perfect anything. The same people who are gonna show up to these, they'll travel to our headquarters, or Norma Herzog Community Center. You're not gonna have too many people go, oh man, it's not across the street, I'm not going. These, I, I think it's fine the way it is.
We, we have, and we have a certain amount of people that will be at all four.
And, and, and you will have those folks, and they will travel.
Oh yeah.
I mean, these are headquarters and Norma Herzog are right in the smack dab of all areas of town, you could get to either within ten minutes. So.
And the one thing I probably just thought of as I'm standing here is, there also is our events happening throughout the year that we'll also be present at, um. For CRNR, we're sponsoring the State of the City Address to the Chamber, uh, Gabriel will be present with a table, so if someone happens to live in Costa Mesa, but. Maybe he's not paying attention, so every event that we're at, and I know the district's doing the same, there's some upcoming city events that we'll both be tabling at, so. In addition to just these, anytime we're in the community, we will have information available for the residents on.
Concerts in the park, the fish fry, all those, this, this is gonna be our focus at those events, I think that's a good.
Mike and I talked, I'm sure we're gonna share a booth, or we'll do a separate booth, but definitely we'll be at concert in the parks as well. So that'll be kind of the, the summer part, leading up to the first August town hall. Alright, and then the last slide that I have is, uh, just an example of what we do um, in all of our other cities that are. Have already been on a three container system, we will have a lot of outreach, um. We can have some of these made, and, and Scott, we haven't talked about this yet, but some of the other jurisdictions, again, these are handouts that we do at all the community events. We can do some that are kind of like on a four by six, like an oversized postcard, that is just these, you know, the year after, more mailers. Just direct mail pieces that we could get out to the residents, because it's new, uh, what goes in which cart, now that, you know. They were pretty used to, you know, putting a lot into that mixed waste cart, and so it's, it's gonna take a while, it's, we, we experienced this. In Newport, when we went from the mixed waste cart to the resource, separate recycling, and so um, residents are doing a fantastic job, but we're in year three, so. It, it takes a little bit of time to adjust, but I think that. I think that most people are gonna be pleasantly surprised, or they're gonna be surprised, the other part is, is hopefully we can convince them to not keep second. Landfill carts, and get a free recycle cart instead, because if you look at all the materials on the screen. The majority goes into the cart with the blue or the green lid, so we would, that would be our goal, is to encourage them to get the additional other carts that are free of charge.
This came last week, when you said oversized postcard.
That's the size.
This is perfect, I mean, people see that, and whoever, it says in the back funded by Cal Recycle. Postcard was funded by Cal Recycle, or pardon? This, okay, okay, but this is the kind of stuff that we need to do, and the fact that it's bilingual helps. Unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever your perspective is, but these, these work, I appreciate that, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, you had mentioned Newport, which you stole the thought out of my head, so um. Year three in Newport, and I think I asked this a while ago when we were talking about one of these things, but I'd love to see. Some sort of preliminary numbers in year three, or data that says, hey, X percent of Newport is like, hundred percent. You know, doing it the right way, or no one's doing it the right way, or in some of the challenges, is that possible to share some of that data at a future meeting? Cause I mean, they're year three, we're gonna be in year one soon enough, so it's like, I'd like to, and Newport has. Its own challenges and opportunities, so I'd just be curious what's going on over there. Awesome, thank you.
Personal question, some of the organics, you can put coffee grounds, are the little paper things, ah.
The, the paper, like old fashioned coffee pot? Not a, not a, not a, not a, not a K.
Why do you use the term old?
I say old fashioned, because that's what I do with my grandma.
I'm talking about the little white.
The filter, yes, it is, that is, that would be considered food soil paper, so yes, the white filter, I say that because we used to, I used to garden with my grandma.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna record you so my wife can hear what you just said.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
The paper filter is organic. So it just all goes in.
Yeah, I have another question for Scott. From Mike's discussion, moving it back to like October fifteenth for the start to roll out, would eliminate the two week delay for the Christmas trees. And I think we have, cause our last um, meeting with the community is the fifth of October, I guess like ten days extra. Is that possible on your end, to start on October?
Yeah, we, I mean, we're gonna start, so we talked about, we need to get, we wanna be ahead of time anyway on the cart survey. So we talked about having the cart survey be postmarked by May fifteenth. And get, give the residents thirty days to fill it out, so by June fifteenth, so obviously it's um, close to twenty-three thousand. We usually won't, but let's say you get twenty, thirty percent that actually fill out the card, it's still a lot of data entry into the system, and then we use that to place the cart orders.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I, I'm just gonna throw, I'll bet, cause to move it up by two weeks to save a delay, I mean, I see the delay, but. There's also a very important and could be crazy thing that's coming up in November nationally. People are gonna be fired up this election if they're not already, you really wanna contend with. Just put it after the election, let people have a breath. The two weeks isn't gonna make, it's not, it's just not, versus people are already antsy, they're gonna get calls like crazy, just because people are. Upset about whatever, so I just say, keep it at that November seventh deal.
I disagree, I think October fifteenth would be a much better.
Those cards, were they mailed to the property owner, or were they mailed to the um, multifamily residence?
It says current resident, so I'd assume, I didn't, everybody would've got this.
So, so someone in a four, fourplex, each resident is getting that information.
For our customers, yes.
Property tax bill goes to the owner of the fourplex. Okay, I'll, I'll, I, I have a number of friends in the fourplexes, so I'll check that. And that, I mean, that information, it's important to get it to the individual people. The city is also gonna be making changes, uh, you know, if they have a two or three bin, and they're, they're putting out food waste. Parts, they have already, um, which confuses them because the card is green. And all the residents that I talked to thought that they were, that was an organics cart, and but, I mean, there's gonna be a lot, a lot going on. In this process.
You know, I, I, I think we had some of these same concerns when we did the organics cart, and it seemed to go better than we, don't you think? It went much better than we expected.
Any complaints in the organics?
So I, I, I agree with you though, Bob, I, I think that's gonna happen, um, my biggest thought. Is the multifamily, that again, the condos and the people that don't have these carts now, I've already heard from residents that live in condos and. Uh, they just don't have the space for them, but well, you know, there's nothing we can do about that.
We'd have to change our ordinance.
We'd have to do a lot of work to make it comply, and I just think what we're doing. Is way ahead of a lot of folks, and I, I think we're, I think we're gonna be okay.
Multifamily that have the two and three yard bins, when they delivered the organic carts, they just put them out there. They didn't have space for them, so they go in a different place. Uh, you know, in the alley, you know, behind your place, and others that I used to walk, and still do. You know, there's, those green carts are there.
Still walk in the alleys, sometimes. Um, question for Director Echols, so you're, I think we've talked about this before, you have been, you don't have individual bins, you have.
We have the dumpsters in various colors, and because we have an HOA and it's level.
Yeah, but you have, you have, you have the green.
We have a green, uh, we have a green, or no, now they switched, they took the green, but we do have a blue and a mixed waste.
So they have a blue one already?
Yep, we've had it for a year or so.
Oh really?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's really good.
Yeah, the one thing that they did take away was the green, I, I can't remember exactly how it all played out.
Are people use, are people using the recyclable one?
Oh yeah, it went, it, it was the green that people had a challenge with, it was the recyclable. And you're same pet peeve as mine, it's like, break down your boxes, people.
It's so frustrating to drive down the street and see people with, and David, you see it from anybody, their lids are open and they've got all these boxes that all have some label that starts with an A and I can't remember the name of that company, but you know, just break them down. I sit in the garage and cut them up, that's my favorite pastime.
Yep.
Um, it, it's just, it's really frustrating.
Oh, yeah, but no, it's, it's gone smooth in our community, so that part's good, so.
Okay, any other questions for Julie at this point? Thank you. Very thorough and good, President, we appreciate it.
President, if I can get direction from the board, I've got two board members that are at odd on when to start the program. It'd be helpful for us if I get direction from the board, do you want to start in October, November 7th? What's your preference?
My proposal is start in October 15th, say we, we don't have to.
Right. So Oc- October 15th, November 7th, I, I need direction, which, where do you want us to start?
Can we make, can we agendize this for the, the board meeting and make a decision then? Is that okay?
Sure.
I, I mean, I, I'm torn because I hear both sides, and I understand the Director Echols is saying. Um, but I'm still torn with that thing of that two week delay, that, that's the killer for me, so. So if we could do that as an agenda item, make a decision, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, we'll put.
Well, yeah, that, okay, but let's, if that's okay, we'll bring it to the acto- or October, we will bring it to the October board meeting, we'll bring it to the April board. Thank, thank you staff for doing that. Mr. Mosher, you got a comment on the side?
Uh, yes, thank you Ken, President Schaefer. Uh, I think I've mentioned before that I do live in Newport Beach and I experienced the CRNR rollout two, or I guess it was three years ago. And so I just had a couple of comments about that. First, I, the, the cart exchange, in my experience, at least on my street, it went very smoothly. I don't recall it being preceded by any town halls of the sort that you're talking about. I think the communication was almost entirely by mail, we were told what was going to happen. And it pretty much happened. The, the main bump in that was there was a period of a couple of weeks where CRNR was trying to get its, its pickup truck schedule realigned with the new three cart system. So we went through several weeks where residents were uncertain if their cart was going to be picked up that day at all, or possibly picked up at 10 o'clock at night. Uh, but that was worked out in a month or so, and so now and for the last two or three years, we have the three carts being picked up on the same day and on a very predictable schedule. One of the problems encountered, and I can't tell from the presentation whether that's going to happen here. The initial cart delivery had embossed on the lids of the carts, I think I've mentioned this before, what should go in them, and some of those directions conflicted with the later directions as to what should go in the carts. And so that continues to cause some confusion. Uh, at a city council meeting just a couple of weeks ago, a high school group that had been proactively doing some social media work and preparing outreach had uh, trying to promote recycling, had put out information that was indicating that you should put, for instance, lumber in the green cart, which was something that was embossed on the lid. And I think that's definitely a no-no here, where it's going to the digester, in Newport Beach, it's going to a composting facility. I don't think it was intended there either, that the students were showing big piles of lumber and it should go in the green cart. They probably got that from the lid. And so I, I think sticking with the labels is good. Uh, but the outreach here is still, I think, very confusing, and I think Director Echols would find that the compliance in Newport Beach even after three years as the recycling is not all that great, not necessarily because the people are not being conscientious, but none of us have actually worked as a sorter at a MRF facility. So we really don't know what is recyclable and what is not. I, I think an initial confusion is people will think that anything that is reusable is recyclable, like if you could take it to Goodwill, it must be recyclable, so it should go in the recycling cart. My understanding is that's not correct, anything that has mixed parts on it, partly metal, partly plastic, is not supposed to be recycled. I don't see anything in the directions here telling people not to put mixed products in them. I think there's a lot of confusion about where textiles go, I don't see that mentioned at all in this outreach, and I'm not sure it is in the Newport outreach. Uh, we have an odd direction on the lids of our recycling carts, saying that we should put old shoes in there, and shoes you would think are not all of one material. I don't know if that direction is correct or not. Styrofoam is a big problem, I see people putting that in the recycling cart, thinking, it doesn't add a lot of weight, but people are confused about that. I think it might be on the label proposed here for the landfill cart, I, I don't see it in this clearly spelled out here, so I, I think this could need some work. My suggestion, Newport Beach, which never has been quite adopted, it would be good to inform the public of what the biggest and most frequent mistakes are of what people put in the wrong cart. And then I think they would be conscientious, trying to avoid those mistakes. So if CRNR could publicize that, probably would be more useful than some of this. And those are my comments, I think, from my experience. Yeah, and, and I, I, I believe, as I pointed out, and I think Mr. Ballye confirmed, you're, you're actually going to probably with the three cart system ironically, even though you're being forced to do it, probably find a reduction in the amount of recycling, because in all good intention, people are going to be putting stuff that could be recovered into the cart that's going directly to landfill, and conversely, they're putting a lot of stuff that can't be recovered, thinking that it could be recovered in the recycling cart, so probably initially going to do a little worse than you're doing now. Thank you.
Um, I, I have a second home in Oakland, and Melissa's familiar with that process out there. And I thought one of the most valuable pieces of information that we got um, in the mail, I believe, was directly in line with what Mr. Mosher said, and that is, they, they publish what goes in the cart and they publish what doesn't go in the cart. And so, you know, um, I, I think that, I think I know that a lot of the literature is probably already developed, but for a resident to see what doesn't go in the cart is probably equally important as what goes in the cart. I see. I, Julie is, is.
Anyway.
I, I agree with everything that Mr. Mosher said, and uh, just a month ago, I did a presentation to the Midway Sanitary District, giving them uh, an overview on waste characterizations. Again, as Mr. Mosher mentioned, that the, the general person doesn't get to see the sorting process when we do our waste characterizations, whereby uh, we take 200 pound samples throughout the loads, and we do a, a characterization of the trash load, the recycle load, and the organics load to identify all the materials that have been put in the wrong cart. So when I did the presentation, I brought actual photos, which I would love to come back here a year from now, again, to speak, do education. I like to bring props with me as examples of what should be going in the recycle cart, physical things that I take out of my refrigerator, out of the bathroom, and say, these are the items that should go into your blue cart, because those are the ones that we still show go in the trash, some of them think they're organic. And there's just a lot, and this all ties into SB 1383, where as part of our agreement with the city, we do what we call route reviews and lid flips, and it's really about looking in all three containers and seeing if people are putting the right materials in the right color cart, and if not, they leave an oops tag and they check the boxes, and then they can call us, and then we're required to do a follow-up piece of mail or email literature, reminding them on the proper items that go into each cart. And what I showed you on the screen on the what goes where, that's just a sample, we also have all of ours in English and Spanish, so everything will be translated into both languages, but there are so many things, and uh, Mr. Mosher hit the nail on the head, that's exactly why we no longer do embossing on the lids of our carts because of legislation changes, recycling changes, what might be recycled today might not be recyclable five years from now. And so it's much easier to lay another label on top of the old one because there is a lot of confusion of older carts out there that say you can put different materials. We have some carts out in the field that say, um, that do say textiles on them, and they're putting, we have textiles in the recycling. Well, textiles, really, we encourage to go to Goodwill or, um, you know, a pantry that maybe, you know, serves those in need, but for, for now textiles, we can do other community textile collection events, and then we would donate those to the Goodwill, or we really encourage people to take their old textiles to a, um, a reuse facility and, or donate them, like I said, to friends, family, hand me downs, as we used to call it.
Fellow Levis for a lot of money, see.
Right, there, you could get 501s, they're a lot of money right now, so, but textile recycling is definitely something that was embossed on a lot of carts in years past.
You know, for the town hall meetings, I like your, your example of the do's and don't pictures. Let's have some of those pictures at the town hall meetings, and I think somewhere into early next year, as the program is, is going, we send a postcard that says, just a reminder, here's the do's and the don'ts, don't put this stuff in there. And I, I think that behooves us to, to take those extra steps to do that, so. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, anything else on item? All right, seeing none, then we'll go to item seven, the solid waste rate study. Scott, you can turn that over to Marissa, or is it?
Yes, I'll turn that over to Marissa.
Good morning, President Schaefer and members of the board. Um, at the March 12th study session, staff and NBS presented the draft solid waste rate study and rate recommendation. Um, this rate recommendation was based on the district's projected O and M expenditures, um, which included CRNR's new occupancy rate and disposal costs. Following the initial report and meeting, CRNR informed staff that the occupancy rate needed to be revised, that the previously provided rate did not include recycling collection costs, so that's cost for the blue cart, um, nor did it include SB 1383 compliance costs. So with that revision, the district's projected expenditures has increased, and this rate study and recommended rate that's being presented today is based on that new projection. Jeremy with NBS is here to present, um, the new report and recommendation, and Jeremy and staff is available to answer questions following the presentation.
Morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, thank you for that introduction, Marissa. Is everybody able to see, I just, uh, shared my screen on the presentation?
You're good.
All right, awesome. Um, so I will just do a brief overview in terms of the presentation of kind of the methodology that we talked about last time, since it was about a month um, since I was here last. Um, and as Marissa alluded to, I will give an overview of what has changed, um, since the last time we presented on March 12th. Uh, what the, what the impacts are to those proposed rates, um, and then talk about next steps in the process, and certainly available to answer questions at the end. So I'll just talk briefly, um, kind of reiterate what we talked about at the, the previous presentation. So in terms of the methodology and the purpose of the study, so there are specific legal requirements in the state of California in terms of doing a rate study, um, so, and typically that will be prepared every five years, that's the, the limit in terms of rate setting, that you could set your rates for five years. Um, and thirdly, we want to demonstrate the fairness and the equity of the rates that are being proposed. Just to, to give the high level overview again, there are three main components when we're conducting this rate study. Um, the first is the financial plan, where we're looking at the sources and uses of the funds. The second is the cost of service analysis, where we're allocating the revenue requirements, um, to the customer classes. In this case, it's a bit simpler since the, um, we have one customer class here, which is the residential customers. And then the third is the rate structure, um, in terms of how we design the rates to recover that revenue. The, um, the big term that we use when we're looking at developing that financial plan is what we call the net revenue requirement. Um, so that's estimating the costs that need to be recovered from those customer rates. Um, so that includes O and M costs, um, if you had any debt service or capital costs would be included in that, which is not the case here for the district. Um, and then we subtract out any non-rate revenues, such as from licenses, fines, application fees, and that gets us to what we call this net revenue requirement. Uh, the second piece that we're also considering is, um, adequate funding for levels of reserves, um, to have those savings in the bank for, for, for necessary expenses. So, um, the cost of service, um, high level in terms of how we look at the allocating those costs, we typically have, uh, four different categories. Uh, collection, disposal, organics, and administration. Um, so, so once we allocate those costs, then, um, we take the customer class, the residential customers, and then we allocate those costs based on the proportional share of the criteria. And then the third piece is what we call rate design, so first and foremost, um, per the legislation, those rates need to be proportional to cost of service. Um, there's no markup or, you know, profit essentially associated with the rates. The San Juan Capistrano Court decision, um, really emphasized that fact that it needs to, the, the rate study itself is the homework behind demonstrating the cost basis. With related to Prop 218, those California legal requirements. And then some other items that were, of course, were, um, looking at when designing these rates, they need to be equitable, not discriminating against very, uh, a certain customer or customer class. We look at both the, the ease of administration from the district's side, as well as understanding in terms of the rate payer side. Um, and then, of course, providing that revenue stability for the district. So the three, um, main objectives here with this solid waste rate study is ensuring that those rates will cover all those projected operating and maintenance costs, um, especially looking at the rollout going to the three cart system and the SB 1383 compliance costs to make sure that those rates are keeping pace with those projected expenses. Second part is maintaining appropriate reserve funds, and then the third is, again, the compliance with the legal requirements of Prop 218. So now going into the specific details from the study, um, as Marissa said, there was a significant, um, an unexpected correction to the rate projections based on the transition from the two cart to the three cart system. Um, so that first table, and I've highlighted in yellow, those were the rates provided, um, back in February in terms of the occupancy rates. Um, the second table in yellow then shows the revised rates that were provided about a month later. Um, so as you could see, that occupancy, um, in 2425 increased significantly by 55% for uh, fiscal year 2425. And that has a significant impact in terms of the financial plan, so that increases those occupancy expenses from what are currently at 3.1 million in this fiscal year to 4.8 million. So I have highlighted, um, that in red there in the, uh, financial plan chart, and so what happens then in terms of the blue, that net revenue requirement, that results in essentially a million dollars extra in terms of the net revenue requirement, going from currently in the budget in 2324 to then the 2425 budget. So that's a significant increase, um, in terms of that net revenue requirement. And if you look, um, two more rows down, if you look at, um, the surplus or deficit with the rate increases compared to, um, if you look one row above the annual surplus deficit without the rate increases, we, NBS and district staff really work collaboratively just to, um, we, NBS and district staff really work collaboratively just to, um, come up with a scenario that minimizes to the extent practicable, those revenue adjustments that are necessary to account for this big change that we had in the occupancy rates. So without a rate increase, we would be looking at a budget deficit of 3.5 million by the end of the, the five-year period. So, um, these rate increases that we're highlighting here are really just to maintain, um, keeping pace with those expected increases as well as keeping a minimum reserve. Um, so I've summarized that, um, both in this graph. So, um, the blue is showing those projected O and M expenses. That black line shows your revenues under your existing rates and you could see, um, that it would not keep pace with those expenses. So we've designed that, that green line, the projected revenues under the proposed rates really to just, um, keep pace with those projected expenses. And the other piece is the, um, recommended reserve targets. So similarly, we have designed the structure to keep pace, just maintaining that minimum, uh, level of reserve target, which is the 30% of the operating, um, budget. So that is what is shown on this graph. One question that came up, um, when we talked to the CAC, um, back in, in March as well was, um, not only looking at the five-year projection, but also, um, the 10-year. And so part of the goal of this rate design is, um, to avoid to the extent practicable, what we call rate shocks. So significant increases or decreases in the, um, the rate, um, adjustments on a yearly basis. And so what we've done with this plan is not only have we tried to, um, minimize the rate increases to the extent practicable, but looking out over the course of the 10-year projection, we're trying to also en- ensure that there does not need to be a significant increase, um, in terms of those rate adjustments in the outer years. Um, so this graph is looking if we assume out a 6% annual adjustment, um, starting in 29 and 30, um, that we would still stay, um, at the minimum recommended reserve targets without needing a significant increase in the future. So cost of service analysis, I'll briefly go through this. This is the same exercise as we talked about last time. This is just adjusting the allocations based on the new net revenue requirements that we're looking at. So what we do is we take those functional costs for collection, disposal, organics and admin, and then we allocate them based on those factors such as number of accounts as well as the volume or tonnage of the waste that's being disposed of. And so that is how we arrive at the allocate or the projected rates. So that's the allocated costs over the number of accounts. And so, um, based on that, we have a monthly change of 16.8% in 2425. And so the, the revenue adjustment is that 17%, but that flat rate adjustment, um, is 16.8%. Um, that's because we're truing up the number of accounts as well as costs compared to when the last rate study was performed in 2019. And so this shows the, the ceilings in terms of those maximum rates, uh, over the five-year period. Um, so on a monthly basis, we're looking at current rate of 2410 going up to 2814, um, in the next fiscal year, um, all the way through 2829, setting a ceiling of, um, 3687. And then we have the same graph as was shown, um, back in March here. Uh, the lighter yellow is where the district currently is at, at the 2410. And then the darker yellow, the 2814 is what the proposal is for next fiscal year. I do want to note, as I did last time, this, uh, for the other, um, agencies in Orange County is just based on the current 2324 rates. We did not inflate, um, the numbers projecting out for 2425. Um, that data was just not available in terms of what their individual rate increases will be for the, the next fiscal year. So this isn't exactly an apples-to-apples comparison because we're showing both a current rate as well as a, uh, future rate compared to all of the surrounding agencies' current rates. Uh, last couple of slides here at the previous, um, board meeting, we were asked to also take a look at implementing rent rate adjustments just over a two-year period and then conducting another rate study in 2526. Um, so district staff, um, were able to identify approximately $80,000 in terms of external costs, um, for conducting another study in two years. So that includes the study itself, the postcards, the Prop 218 noticing. As well as in addition to those externals costs, there's a lot of additional district staff time required in terms of drafting the RFP, reviewing proposals, selecting the consultant, managing the consultant. Um, there's also a fairly intensive data, um, process in terms of the, the data that needs to be included in the new study. Um, and then of course, the Prop 218 noticing and outreach. So all of that was included in looking at this alternative option of implementing, uh, two-year adjustment. And so in that scenario, it would be 20% adjustments in both 2425 as well as 2526. And that is really, um, to ensure that the, um, floors are set or the ceilings are set high enough in terms of those rate increases with the, um, additional uncertainty of timing of that next study as well as the implementation of that study. So it's really making sure that those ceilings are in place. So if, um, there are issues with timeline or implementation of those rates, the district is covered in terms of adjustments as well as those, um, reserve targets. And so what happens with that two-year rate scenario is the district will build up, um, a greater reserve than the minimum, um, under that scenario. Um, but the problem is, is then assuming that, um, then those adjustments are kept in place over the five-year period. Um, then looking at the five to 10-year period, a 6% annual revenue adjustment would not be sufficient to stop the district from then drawing down on the reserves. So there would actually need to be a higher, a level revenue adjustment, um, in the outer years in order to keep pace with those, um, uh, projected expenses. And so this is really, um, not, this is not what we recommend because these types of large increases followed by that small or, or zero increases and then another large increase again, um, is not best practice in terms of rate setting. The ideal is to have stability in terms of what those annual adjustments are projected to be. Um, so we looked at this scenario and we would not recommend this as the preferred alternative for the adjustments. The other piece would just be the significant increases in terms of the, the, um, ceilings and to, on these rate increases over the, the next two years. So it would be 2887 and then potentially going up to 3464 just over a two-year period. So that would be a significant increase in just those two years. Um, so again, not recommended in terms of that structure. So, um, next steps, just to highlight kind of timeline that the district is looking at. Um, the proposed schedule that was shown in the, the staff report, um, would be to, uh, receive and file the study. That would be on, um, April 22nd is the goal and direct staff to mail the Prop 218 notice at that time and set the public hearing date. Um, the goal of staff is to have that public tiering date, um, on June 24th, satisfying that 45-day noticing period, um, in terms of considering and improving the new rates in order to then adopt the new rates effective July 1st, 2024. I know that was a significant, um, change from what was shown a month, uh, previously. So at this time, both myself and staff are available to answer any questions or comments that you may have at this time. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Jeremy. Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so a couple of questions here. First, uh, so a month ago, we reviewed this and you explained obviously the, the initial, uh, occupancy rate went up. Why within a month? What, what happened? What, what didn't we know a month ago? That we do know now today? Why was it changed so drastically?
I can answer that question. It was just an error on CRNR's part. They forgot to give us the number. So they saw our presentation. They said, oh, by the way, that's not the right number for the occupancy. This is it. And they increased it because of SB 1383.
Okay. All right. Uh, and then, um, on the regional monthly rate comparison. So if I'm understanding it correctly, using the 2814, all things staying the same, that puts us then at the, uh, the fourth highest rate regionally, correct?
That is correct. And that chart is again, assuming, um, it doesn't take into account any potential rate adjustments for the surrounding agencies in the new fiscal year. We just did not have that data available in terms of what those increases may be. So this is all looking at the current 2324 rates for all the agencies.
And then going to say Newport, who as we know, been doing this for three years with the three carts and all that. How, what's the difference between, I mean, that's a $3 difference between say us and Newport and their rates have had to have factored in these three carts for a while now.
Yeah, I couldn't, couldn't comment on the Newport budget in terms of what is included in their budget. Um, that results in that difference of three, $3.
Doesn't Newport have commercial included?
They don't. Okay. Okay. And then, uh, all right, well, I'd be curious about that going forward. But then, uh, so the rates that were presented a month ago, let's just, again, I know my math's not exact, but each year had approximately, I don't know, call it 30, uh, 40, 40 cents increase each year. Now we're going to a dollar increase each year. What, what's the difference there? Again.
The biggest difference is receiving those revised occupancy rates from CRNR. So that, um, basically resulted in an impact to the budget in 2425 and of an additional million and a half dollars. And so that is really what's driving that, um, that revenue requirement increasing significantly compared to what was shown back in March.
Well, no, I guess my question is, you know, I, I see the, the number, but the initial numbers were based on again, I'll call it 40 cents from 2425 to 2526, 2627. Now, instead of that, say 40 cents, now we're basically at a buck increase each, each year.
I, I think I can answer that question. So the, so the initial, um, rate for the recycling was more for processing, collection and processing. What, what they forgot last month, see, I forgot is the capital expense, which is the person got the blue cart. That's where you've seen this increase in the costs is the capital expenses.
And what, what's, can you just briefly walk me through the increase each year on the occupancy rate? What's driving and how much increase each year they charging us? What, what's behind that?
This is looking at an assumed 5% CPI adjustment each year.
There you go. Okay. Gotcha. Then, uh, where does this fall into per our contract, our current existing contract with them? Again, uh, within the regional outlook of there, of our occupancy rate versus the surrounding areas. Will this still be contract compliant? And where?
I don't know if other agencies use the occupancy rate. So I don't know that there's a comparison that can be made between the two.
Yeah, we, we don't compare occupancy to occupancy to other agencies. It's, it's the way we structure our rates is, is, it's quite different than what other agencies do it. Cause, cause quite frankly, they, they have CRNR billing them, right? And they're seeing ours billing them and, uh, they, they get a bill. We, we, we base our, our rates on, on tonnage.
Right. I guess I'm more thinking what CRNR is charging us as an agency has, per our contract has to be, you know, X percent of the county median and all.
Yeah, you're talking about, yeah, the net, net to hauler rate. We do have to, we can, we can, I, I show, George is saying, so we'd have to come back and, and we can do a, uh, calculation, see where, with, with these rates. Um, the net to hauler rate, yes, is, has to be within 10% of the counties.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Uh, if we could see that, uh, the next deal. And then, um, and then, uh, just on the two-year, instead of looking at a five-year, the two-year, I know staff report said not recommended. Is that just primarily because the cost of doing a 218 in two years? Is that the main driving force?
No, Jeremy can speak more on it, but it, it also had to do with the reserve levels increasing significantly. And then even with a 6% rate adjustment in the years after, the reserves were still dropping. Um, so he can probably explain the financials a little bit better on why it wasn't recommended.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the answer is kind of all of the above, right? So there are those external costs in terms of conducting the new study and the noticing, all of that. There's, there's also an external risk too, in terms of, you know, a protest vote, right? So that any adjustments in two years not being successful. So I think that's part of the consideration. But here with looking at just the two-year horizon, um, because the district, um, collects these revenues on the tax roll, um, part of that is a risk proposition in terms of making sure there's enough revenue coming in as well as enough in the reserves. So that's why it would be a recommendation to have those significant 20% adjustments in the first two years just to make sure that the revenues are sufficient. Um, but then what happens is assuming that the ceilings are kept similar to, um, what we're showing here is that what happens is that you start drawing down reserve, those reserves, um, starting in 29 and then into 30, even if you're looking at a 6% revenue adjustment starting in 2930. And so you'd have to see another significant increase just to keep pace with those O and M expenses. Um, so this structure is just not recommended from that perspective. Um, so that's why we're recommending the five-year and setting those ceilings with those progressive rate adjustments over the five-year period.
All right. Well, all right. I I'll, I'll sit out. I'm, I'm good on the questions for right now.
Uh, back to the regional rate comparisons, I want to make sure I understand. We know based on what we're doing, what our costs are going to be. Um, do we have any idea of all those other jurisdictions? They're going to be faced with a lot of the same costs we are with 1383. So can we naturally, uh, I won't use the word assume because that's a can we, can we think that those folks are going to also be going up? I mean, do we know how many of them are looking at the same process now that we are?
I, I, I believe Julie can ask this question. I believe, uh, most of their client cities, they have an automatic, they have a CPI increase in theirs, right? So we know they're going to have a CPI increase on all their client cities. So their, their, their rates will be going up on, on July 1st as well.
But aren't they looking at the same increased 1383 costs that we are? Or maybe they already have a recycling.
Some of them already have. So over the last, I mean, so remember this went into effect January 2022.
Right.
So a lot of them have, and some of them also have them tiered increased rates. So some of them may have a little bit of those 1383 costs plus the CPI. But I think it was clarified, it helped me, these are gross rates. So all of these cities have franchise or road mitigation impact fees are all included. So these aren't, these aren't net to hauler rates. And so I think Director Echols asked that question. I was, um, I, um, while we were talking, I sent a, a note to Scott that, uh, we recently had to do one for the city of Orange, for all the cities in Orange County. So we have the current rates we had presented to Orange, uh, in March, city council meeting. So I have current rates that I'll email. So I have current rates that I'll email and share with Scott. That way, staff doesn't have to spend any time doing the work we recently had to do. But that'll show you all the net to hauler rates and kind of where you fall. But yes, to Jeremy's point, all of these cities, it doesn't matter who the hauler is. They all adjust in July because that's when we get our landfill increases. So they'll all get a bump. Minimum so far landfill increases this year about three point four percent.
He's not experienced with that net to hauler rate. We're going to be more that way, aren't we? We always have tended on the net to net rate to be more centered. Whereas what that that's really been our goal over the years is to be centered on that net net to hauler.
Again, I think that the the significant right reason why our costs are going relatively high is because of the blue cart, the capital expenses. All the other agencies already, all the other cities, other communities already have three carts. They already have a blue, they already have a green, they already have a black. We now have a blue cart.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's, that's, that's really the driving force, which is compliant with three eight thirteen three. We need a blue cart. That capital expense is what's driving the prices up.
The other, the other comment I'm going to make is CAC sort of felt that we were over-reserving. I I I have to disagree with that. I I know in my business right now over-reserving, it's too bad my industry didn't over-reserve. We wouldn't be faced with what we're faced with now. I'm a believer that making sure that, I don't want to gouge people on the reserves. But at the same point, we've seen some things that have caused us to have to hit our reserves. So I I think what we're doing in this rate study, I'm very comfortable with the reserve situation. And I I, you know, if we get, if we get some discussions on tiered rates, which I know, Scott, you're planning, we'll see how that plays. But I still think we're doing what we need to do with the reserves.
Well, yeah, the net to hauler rate is by contract with CRNR. So we we have a narrow range in the middle, ten percent above or below. Okay. And then we're going to get some data on that. The other thing is, is I hadn't noticed in the previous draft, and maybe this occurred now. Our present reserves are for solid waste in our operations manual is thirty percent. That's a policy decision, somehow that that is, there was a policy decision. I think that's the board's purview, whether that rate, the the study, the study used thirty-five percent, which is a significant difference. So out out at the end of five years, it's a five hundred thousand dollar difference in monies that we need to collect to maintain the thirty-five percent. I don't know whether staff or or the consultant made that choice, but I don't believe either one has the purview to make that choice.
The report does identify thirty percent, our minimum. It also identifies the recommendation of thirty-five percent. But our revenue or our reserve, and Jeremy can probably address it a little bit more detail, but our reserve actually falls below the recommended thirty-five percent in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So we're not, we're not using that thirty-five percent as our marker. It's just a recommendation so we can see thirty percent, we can see the recommended thirty-five, and then where we actually fall.
But but the rates are based on thirty-five percent. And there were no, there was not a rate chart in there based on thirty percent. There was a, a large chart of costs. And and one chart identified, you know, one one chart identified what the actual cost would be if it was thirty percent, which is the present policy decision versus the thirty-five percent, that, you know, but but the rates for the thirty, the rates were not presented, I don't believe, for the thirty percent alternative. It was, the rates were presented for the thirty-five percent alternative.
Just to clarify, that minimum reserve target, the green that I'm showing there, that is the thirty-five or the, sorry, the thirty percent as the minimum as adopted by the board. So we're ending just at the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, just above that thirty percent as the minimum, not the thirty-five, which is the recommendation.
But the rate, the rates that you showed in the study were based on the thirty-five percent recommendation. Is that true?
No, this is based on hitting the thirty percent as the the minimum here.
I'm not talking about this chart. I'm talking about the rate. Was the rate, the proposed, the the study rates, the proposed study rates, were they based on thirty percent or thirty-five percent?
The thirty percent is what we're looking at.
I have to read a little more in more depth.
Need to, yeah, we seem to have
Why, why is the thirty-five percent even considered?
The thirty, the thirty-five percent is really saying that while the the thirty percent is a minimum target, we recommend that not necessarily designing rates to be at the absolute minimum in terms of a reserve. And so I think that what the comparison, you know, in the last study and when we were here in March, we were proposing to increase that reserve a bit. And part of that, having that reserve cushion is to deal with unexpected changes, either in terms of operating costs or new legislation as a way to soften the impacts of of needed revenue adjustments, right? If you have an unexpected change in terms of your operating costs, having a reserve that's higher than the minimum as adopted by the district allows some flexibility in order to draw down those reserves to soften any revenue adjustments. And so that's really the recommendation for targeting something above the thirty percent, not necessarily having to get there, but targeting that in order to have some flexibility in terms of dealing with unexpected operating expenses or changes in terms of what the budget looks like in the future.
In in your history doing these rate studies, give me an an example or two of unexpected changes.
Sure, I I think the compliance in terms of SB thirteen eighty-three is a is a great example, right? When we were doing rate studies back five years ago, we we could not have predicted those types of changes in terms of the state legislation, in terms of the organics requirements. And so if an agency has a higher level of reserve, that's above kind of their minimum level. Some have chosen to utilize some of that reserve in order to soften the impacts to the ratepayers.
And and the other agencies have then gone out with a new Prop two eighteen to adjust their rates in accordance with the state legislation or whatever.
Correct, yes. This is, this is common, agencies having to adapt to the new requirements in terms of SB thirteen eighty-three and then subsequently having to go out for a new Prop two eighteen in order to make sure those rates are keeping pace with the changes to their expenses based on those requirements.
Okay, and 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 I appreciate you're providing me with the understanding that these rates are in compliance with our present policy of thirty percent. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we recognize that this is a significant adjustment, right? In terms of those increases in the cost. So we really designed this structure to just to meet the minimums in terms of keeping pace, both with the expenses, which I'll show on this chart here, right? Really having that green line, just keeping pace with those projected expenses as well as those reserve targets, maintaining the minimum recommended reserve or the minimum of the thirty percent that the board was setting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And just for my colleagues, when I talked about comfort level with reserves, it was at thirty percent, not at that's what I'm comfortable with, right? Because that's
Well, that's the present policy.
That's what's our present policy. Yeah.
And on that, and, yeah, I agree. I just, there was confusion on my part, maybe also on Director Uden's part, which is if we're confused, there's other people are going to be confused. Whatever the next presentation is, let's, because you could recommend we increase it to thirty-five, but that's a totally different discussion. Let's base and be very clear in this that this is thirty percent. We could talk thirty-five percent a year from now. That's fine.
Talk any level you want.
Yeah. So let's just make the report going forward very clear, thirty percent. Because again, some member of the public's going to catch on to that too and go, well, wait, your policy's thirty. Are you changing it? I don't want that discussion as part of this, you know?
Good point. All right. Any any other questions for Jeremy or for staff? Melissa, we're good?
Yes, I just would like to note that we do plan to bring this to the April board meeting for the board to receive and file the final report, the rate recommendation, authorize the two eighteen notice, and then set the public hearing for June twenty-fourth.
Okay, so, yeah, the April board meeting, we will receive and file the rates and direct you guys to start the the mail process.
Right. So if there's any additional questions, comments before you're ready to move forward with the recommended rates, let us know.
Yeah, definitely. Let Steph know. We send postcards, don't we? I got a, my second home in Cathedral City, I got a Prop two eighteen letter yesterday. And it was a I mean, for such a small city, like, it was so confusing. It was crazy. So I think the postcards get people's attention. So, but
And if we're going to review this and receive and file as a final in April, I'm not prepared to, I'm, I will vote against it. I'm telling you right now, not without this information.
Which additional information, the thirty
Questions that I asked, I want the comparisons, I want a little bit more detail on the, you know, occupancy rates and the increases and things like that, and also the comparative cities and jurisdictions. Because right, right now, it's an incomplete, it's incomplete for me to make a wise decision. Because I would also say, all right, maybe we don't want that dollar increase, fifty percent increase. We want forty. I think we just need a little bit more information and maybe debate it. And if I'm the only one, then I'm the only one.
I I think we can have that information at the board meeting. So I I think we all agree. We want those
Just, I'll just make sure we are clear so we can bring back the information that you request. We'll bring back a survey of all the cities, the net to hauler rate survey of all of all the cities, we'll bring that back. You wanted more information regarding the occupancy rate, like, why is it going up a dollar a month? That's right. You want to make sure that our our study is based on, our rates based on thirty percent reserves. What was it, what was the other?
Let's see. Oh, gosh. Then, no, the main thing was the compared, the the rates to the comparative cities, the, and you hit on the other ones. And then I think that's the bulk of it right there.
We're clear. We get, we can get that back to you.
I'm just going to throw this out there, and I I don't want to over-meeting people to death. But if there's a, if there's a lot of information, then I would be in favor of having a special session. Okay. I mean, before the board meeting, we could do that. This is critical enough that I think we might want to consider that, Scott.
If you're comfortable with that, that's fine.
If if we can do that, I mean, the week before or whatever you guys come up with. Okay?
And and I'm just going to throw one more thing. Just, I'm not giving up yet on the two-year. So a two or even a four-year, it just matches our budget cycle. So I'm not quite there with that's out the window. And again, I may be the only one. That's fine. But I just kind of want that still reviewed.
Can I, can I ask a clarification on what what is, what was Director Echols' question and mine on the net to hauler rate? Is it, are we going to try to project what some of those other agencies increases are?
No, no, no. It's it's the net to hauler rate. So like, CRNR's got most of the that tolerates to their client cities. It's 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 basically a rate without any overhead. It's the true cost of providing the service. And so the the board has a policy or is in agreement that we have to be within ten percent of the average median. So we'll bring that back to see where, with these new rates, are we within that, still within that ten percent with these proposed rates?
The net to hauler rate is a comparison of the other agents.
Yes, that's a hauler rate.
Will we? Okay, so that's the information I'd like to see.
And and I I just remembered one last thing, but like, for instance, Newport again has had the three carts. So these other jurisdictions have had the three carts. Some sort of information, I think you mentioned, you might even have that based on the Orange City Council you just did. That information presented back like, well, are they doing a two eighteen right now too? Because they've already had these three carts or are these rates, theirs at least for another year, two, three, whatever? Just pick a few cities, Newport being one. That's an obvious one to me. Because if we're going to be three dollars higher there in Newport, I kind of want to know why. So.
I just want to clarify. So you're looking for the net to hauler for twenty-four, twenty-five as well as projected increases for some cities for their customer rate for twenty-four?
Basically, the customer rate. At the end of the day, yeah, I want to be able to say, well, why are we, why are we charging our customers three bucks more than Newport is?
Thank you, everybody. I think that concludes the business for the study session. So if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks for your time, everyone. Have a good rest of your morning. Okay? Appreciate it.